Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the February 7th, 2022 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Grace Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Right.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Boucher.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
President.
Marcus Sepiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we will go forward with the agenda items. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the City Council of January 17th, 2022. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the Crest Hill City Council meeting held on January 17th, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward to our city attorney. Our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one matter. It's the resolution authorizing the settlement of two cases that were discussed in executive session a couple of meetings ago. The -- you should have a redlined and clean version of the consent decree for the MR Properties case. It's the 20CH MR 23 -- or CH 2343. If the redlined version, which I think meets all of the concerns that were discussed last time, we can go ahead and you can vote on it. Otherwise, if you feel that there's more discussion necessary, we could go into an executive session, which we have provided for. So question is, do you want to take it up now as is without comment, or if you want to discuss, we should do it in executive session? So I would recommend passing it if there's a need for the executive.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Boucher for a resolution authorizing settlement of Will County cases. Questions or comments?
Well, I did make my comments previous to the meeting about the changes.
Yes, there are--
From village to city.
Yes, there are two typos on the resolution itself, village instead of city. I caught those after the last meeting, but I did not give Jim the updated one. So I apologize for that. But those have been made, and I'll submit that to Jim tomorrow.
Second paragraph, you got village, you don't have city.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, roll call, please, Chris.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1135.
I have nothing else, other than to ask for any questions you guys might have.
Any questions of our city attorney? Good, thanks, Mike. Moving on, city administrator. Our city administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening. First item I have for you tonight is the consulting services agreement. This is between the city and Brent Hasser Consulting. We spoke about this at a previous meeting at a work session. So this will allow us to continue to utilize Steve Golden for economic development and land consulting services at a rate, hourly rate of $85, and he'll work between 20 to 25 hours a week. The agreement goes through July 16th of this year, but there's a provision that we can extend the agreement if we wish by a mutual agreement at that date. So moved as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of the economic development consulting services agreement with Brent Hasser for the hiring of Steve Golden as our interim economic development director. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Resolution number?
It does not say resolution on it. It'll be 1136.
Okay, all right. The next item I have for you is creating the position of Director of Information Technology. This is an item we spoke to you about at a previous work session. I won't go into details. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you, but I think it's understood by everybody that this is a position we sorely need, especially to get us moving into the city center as soon as possible. So what you have here is the ordinance that creates the position, and I also attached the job description. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal for an ordinance amending Title II to add Chapter 2.27, including sections 2.27.010. Wow, there's a whole bunch here. 2.27.020, 2.27.30, and 2.27.040 for the Director of Information Technology in the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments?
Well, I just want to thank you, Jim, because I think this was very much needed by the city, and I appreciate you getting to this right away and finding somebody so quickly, because we really need to get this going. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yeah.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1889.
And the next item I have for you is amending the employee handbook. This is something we discussed at the previous work session as well. The Public Works Union contract that was recently approved increased the amount of longevity for employees, and then it also added the holiday of Presidents' Day. And what we typically do is when a union gets an increase in a benefit like that, we pass that on to non-union employees as well. So this resolution will amend the personnel manual to grant those additional benefits.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution amending Section 4.4 longevity incentive and Section 8.1 holidays of the city of Crest Hill employee handbook. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1889.
And the next item I have for you is amending the employee handbook. This is something we discussed at the previous work session as well. The Public Works Union contract that was recently approved increased the amount of longevity for employees, and then it also added the holiday of Presidents' Day. And what we typically do is when a union gets an increase in a benefit like that, we pass that on to non-union employees as well. So this resolution will amend the personnel manual to grant those additional benefits.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution amending Section 4.4 longevity incentive and Section 8.1 holidays of the city of Crest Hill employee handbook. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1137.
Anything else, Jim?
No, not under city administrator.
Any questions of city administrator? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Public Works Department. Our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifert. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item in front of me this evening, and that is an ordinance authorizing the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois to borrow funds from the water pollution control loan program. This is in regards to the East Water Recreation Facility phosphorus improvements. Bids were approved at the last city council meeting. This is the ordinance that allows us to start that loan application process. We have to put this out, and we'll publish this, and then it allows us, any residents who want to comment, that opportunity to comment. So this would be, council give us the approval to start, to borrow funds from the SRF for the East phosphorus improvements, which is $4.93 million worth of improvements plus engineering at the low, low interest rate of .85 with 15% loan forgiveness.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Sepiti, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin for an ordinance authorizing the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois to borrow funds from the water pollution control loan program. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1890.
That is all I have for you this evening. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions, comments of Public Works?
Just a quick comment about all your Facebook posts. They look so professional lately. I'm loving every picture. Hudos to who's handling it.
Thank you.
It's definitely showing a lot of class and professionalism. I love the way they look. Very clear to the point.
No problem. I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Mark. Moving on to our city engineer. We have no items in the report, and Ron will be here tomorrow if you have any questions. Community Development Department, our community development director, Mr. Steve Golden. Good evening, Steve.
How are you?
I'm good.
Mayor and Council, how are you? Before you is this one item. It's a item that we discussed in our meetings back in January and December regarding the hiring of TIF consultant. As you're aware, we're replacing our former TIF consultant. We are recommending, Jim and I both met with these individuals, Kane McKenna, along with Julia Dave Silverman, to kind of plot a path forward with the TIF district and reestablishing our TIFs. So I'm recommending that we hire Kane McKenna and Associates for a fee of not to exceed $50,000, and their scope of services kind of revolves around looking at the existing TIF and doing the TIF analysis, starting kind of from the beginning because of a Supreme Court ruling. So they will do the eligibility studies. They will do from step one all the way to getting us to creating a TIF.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have motion by--
There is a resolution along with this that was kind of late added to the schedule, so that should be in the process as well. I know it's not listed as a resolution on the agenda.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke, was it?
No, it was me.
Alderman Person Oberlin. I follow.
Close.
For a resolution approving a professional service agreement by and between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Kane McKenna and Associates Incorporated. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. It'll be Resolution 1138.
And just two other quick items in your board packet. Zone Rogers, our administrative clerk for the Building Department submitted a January code enforcement update, as well as a January permit fee report update. They're in your packets. And then the last thing is we did receive, Jim did receive, one proposal for the purchase of this property. It is to the Edmark Brokers and GW Properties, the companies that we brought before you. I believe they're the only proposal--
Correct.
--that we received, and we'll be opening up the proposal, and it should be for the amount that, the $1.8 million that we discussed, and we will be presenting it to the council in two weeks. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions of economic development? Thank you, Steve. Moving on to our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I have before you this evening special parking ordinance with two sections prohibiting parking. One section will prohibit parking on our new city center boulevard and Crest Hill Drive around our facility. The other section of this will also prohibit parking of semi-tractors, trucks, any trailers or box trucks on Brian Drive, so they're special to those locations. We discussed this at the work session, I believe on the 24th, and I'll entertain any questions.
So moved as presented, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal for an ordinance amending the parking regulations. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 1891.
Thank you. I have two week report in my packet, and I'll entertain any questions.
Questions of police department.
Can you tell us publicly how many tickets you wrote, so everyone is aware that we do write tickets?
Seventy-seven.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. I have two agenda items. First one would be for a donation to Crest Hill Pony Baseball for their yearbook ad for the 2022 baseball season.
So moved. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Kubal for the approval of a $65 ad for the Crest Hill Pony Baseball yearbook ad. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And the second agenda item with the creation of the position of Director of Information Technology would be for the appointment of a Director of Information Technology. You have information in your packet. It is my recommendation that we appoint Mr. Timothy Stenett as our Information Technology Service Director for the city of Crest Hill. In your packet, you have a copy of his resume. I will tell you that I was very impressed with the resume that was provided. I was more impressed during the interview with Tim for his amount of knowledge that he has in this field, much, much, much more than what I have, and his experience that he is going to bring forward to the city of Crest Hill. And I do agree also that this is a position that is long overdue in the city of Crest Hill, but I think it's going to be a tremendous benefit for us going forward, especially with the new building and everything else that we have going on. So it's my recommendation to appoint Mr. Tim Stenett at a starting salary of $120,000, three weeks vacation, and all of the other benefits accorded to all other employees in the city of Crest Hill.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke for an approval of Mr. Tim Stenett as our IT Director. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Tim is here tonight with his wife, Tina. Tim, if you'd like to say anything, please to the podium.
Hello, everyone. Just like to thank the mayor and council for creating this position, and thank you for trusting me with it. I'm excited to be working with the city of Crest Hill, and just really looking forward to moving forward and bringing this into the future, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
First, you got to get us to the present, Tim, and then you can-- [laughter] Got a lot, lots to do.
That's a good one.
Anybody else?
Just congratulations, and you came very highly recommended. So we look forward to work with you and see what you're going to do for us.
Welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
Welcome, Tim.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, Tim.
And your lovely wife, Tina.
Okay, just a couple of items. First one is our teen connection program that was started by Mayor Chernovich. Unfortunately, we do not have any teenagers or individuals listed on file, so I am asking if any teenager out there would like to sign up for the teen connection program, which would involve shoveling snow for anyone elderly or disabled individuals throughout the city, cutting grass, raking leaves. We collect the names, and then when somebody calls and asks if we have anybody that they could contact and work out a contract with you, we would then give them your name. So if you'd like to sign up, please go to our website. You could sign up that way. Our call city hall here at 815-741-5123, and we can put your name on the list, because we are getting phone calls, especially with the snow, for some help and assistance to people that need it. The next one is in regards to the snowstorm that we had last week. I believe it was almost 11 inches of snow that we had throughout our city. It was probably the largest snowfall that we've had in the last several years. I would certainly like to extend my gratitude to Public Works for the job that the men and women of Public Works did. That was a long event that took place. The good news is it was not as long as was predicted by all of the weather stations for our area, but it was still a long, long period of time that the men and ladies were out there plowing the snow. And unfortunately, we had a very serious water main break during the snowstorm also, so that had to be attended to also. But hats off to the Public Works and also to the police department. I know it's not easy for the police officers to maneuver in that snowstorm. I'm sure there were a lot of calls for assistance that they helped with, and in addition to the normal calls that were out there. I do want to say to the people that did stay home that day, that was very well appreciated because it made cleanup services a little bit easier for everybody during that duration. The next thing that I wanted to make a comment is in regards to the garbage pickup. I know that we had a lot of phone calls here at city hall in regards to the Wednesday and Thursday garbage that was not picked up because of the snowstorm. That was not our, that was not the decision of the city of Crest Hill. That was the decision of our public services, and they made the decision based on safety needs of their employees and on some, I'm sure, some staff shortages that were out there. So again, I know it's an inconvenience for those people that had Wednesday and Thursday garbage pickup. It will be picked up this week on your regular day of Wednesday or Thursday. I apologize as the city of Crest Hill for any inconvenience that it causes you, but sometimes with the active nature, we have to adjust. And it will be picked up, and so I just thank you for your patience in that situation. The last thing that I have is for the Veterans and Police Memorial. Would ask for a meeting this, next Thursday, February 17th, at 1:00 PM in City Council chambers. This will be to discuss our 2022 Memorial Day ceremony. More than likely, the ceremony will be held here on this property this year. Hopefully, that will be the last year, and then next year we can have a rededication at New City Hall. So anybody who would like to join us, it's strictly a volunteer basis. We accept any and all volunteers. So if you'd like to be part of the planning process for this year, please join us on Thursday, February 17th, at 1:00 PM. That is it for the mayor. Unless there are any questions, I will certainly try to answer them.
Just a quick comment in regard to your teen connection. Is there a way you can send some information to the schools? Because oftentimes, a lot of parents reach out if they're looking for their kids to make some hours. That would be good thing for them to know.
Sure. I will have Mary Bell take care of that tomorrow.
Yeah, just the younger generation, they don't watch our cable TV, so it would be good thing to advertise it that way.
Okay.
I'm sorry? Oh.
Ray, is that something that can qualify for community service hours for the teenagers?
Unfortunately, the way it's set up is that the individual team would work out a negotiated contract with the homeowner for payment for services rendered. The city just provides the names of the individuals that call here, that they can then reach out to them. But there still may be some at the schools that would like to take advantage of that for a little extra cash on hand. Again, for shoveling snow, cutting grass, raking leaves, but that is strictly between, for liability, it's between the homeowner, their insurance, and the individual. Okay, moving on to our city clerk's report. Our city clerk, Christine Boucher Hall.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a little reminder to the council and the public that the next council meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 22nd, due to Monday being Presidents' Day. And I also like to thank Mark Seifert for taking the time out Wednesday in the snowstorm to go pick up Lori Thrasher from the clerk's office, so she could come in the office and man the phones. So thank you, Mark, and thank you, Lori, for what you did last Wednesday. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, any questions, city clerk? Thanks, Chris. City treasurer's report. Our treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from January 3rd, 2022 through January 16th, 2022, in the amount of $247,261.98. I seek your approval on our list of bills, which in that same timeframe, total $324,412.79.
So moved as presented.
Can I get a second? Second.
We have motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Ed, thank you all. I'll take some questions if you have one. Any questions of city treasurer?
Thanks, Glenn.
Unfinished business? We have nothing. Anyone? New business? Anyone? Committee liaison reports? Anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? We will begin with Ward 1 this evening. Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say thanks to Public Works and the police department for all they did during the last snow, how they took care of that, and made our roads safe. Also, welcome, Tim, to the city of Crest Hill. Hopefully, you're here a long time with us, and like Tina said, you'll get us first to the present, and we can go to the future.
Thank you.
And happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Don't forget your sweetheart out there.
Alderman Boucher.
Congratulations, Tim. Glad to have you aboard. Thank you. Glad to be here.
Ward 2, Alderman Jefferson.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Gazal.
Just want to wish our cable man, Ron Romero, happy gladiate birthday. It was his birthday, so he doesn't get that many compliments in here. Thank you, Ron, for everything you do. And I also want to announce our second year Papa Food Pantry will be held on Saturday, March 5th, at the library parking lot. We're hoping by the fall, we'll be at city hall for that, and that's a collaboration with Aurora Food Pantry, Calvary Church, and City Crest Hill. 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Spread the word. Thank you, Mayor.
Ward 3, Alderman Person Oberlin.
Well, I want to wish everybody out there a happy Valentine's Day. Look out for Cupid's quiver. Welcome aboard, Tim, and Tina as well, and thank you to everybody who contributed to all the things we had during this massive snowstorm. Thank you all.
Alderman Sepiti.
Thank you to Mark Seifert and his crew at all the snow and water main breaks and all that. Appreciate all your hard work, and welcome, Tim. Look forward to working with you.
Word for Alderman Albert.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
And Alderman Kubal.
I'm nothing at this time either.
Okay, public comment. If anyone would like to address city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. We'll let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city attorney, Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
I don't have any executive session.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
We have motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Boucher.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Ed, thank you all. I'll take some questions if you have one. Any questions of city treasurer?
Thanks, Glenn.
Unfinished business? We have nothing. Anyone? New business? Anyone? Committee liaison reports? Anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? We will begin with Ward 1 this evening. Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say thanks to Public Works and the police department for all they did during the last snow, how they took care of that, and made our roads safe. Also, welcome, Tim, to the city of Crest Hill. Hopefully, you're here a long time with us, and like Tina said, you'll get us first to the present, and we can go to the future.
Thank you.
And happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Don't forget your sweetheart out there.
Alderman Boucher.
Congratulations, Tim. Glad to have you aboard. Thank you. Glad to be here.
Ward 2, Alderman Jefferson.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Gazal.
Just want to wish our cable man, Ron Romero, happy gladiate birthday. It was his birthday, so he doesn't get that many compliments in here. Thank you, Ron, for everything you do. And I also want to announce our second year Papa Food Pantry will be held on Saturday, March 5th, at the library parking lot. We're hoping by the fall, we'll be at city hall for that, and that's a collaboration with Aurora Food Pantry, Calvary Church, and City Crest Hill. 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Spread the word. Thank you, Mayor.
Ward 3, Alderman Person Oberlin.
Well, I want to wish everybody out there a happy Valentine's Day. Look out for Cupid's quiver. Welcome aboard, Tim, and Tina as well, and thank you to everybody who contributed to all the things we had during this massive snowstorm. Thank you all.
Alderman Sepiti.
Thank you to Mark Seifert and his crew at all the snow and water main breaks and all that. Appreciate all your hard work, and welcome, Tim. Look forward to working with you.
Word for Alderman Albert.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
And Alderman Kubal.
I'm nothing at this time either.
Okay, public comment. If anyone would like to address city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. We'll let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city attorney, Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
I don't have any executive session.
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
We have motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Boucher.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Sepiti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM. I thank you, and good evening.